All right, if I can break up the party and the staff over there, we'll call things to order. Before we get started, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you have reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. With that said, you have the minutes from last month's meeting. Any additions or corrections? Do I have a motion to approve? There's a motion and a second. You have on your desk in front of you a memo from staff regarding the Robert Heron property off of Murphy Road. This was a late addition to the packet. Do I have a motion to add this, or may I have a motion to add this to the agenda under hearings for major final plats? We have a motion, do I have a second? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We'll add that under the hearings, last item in hearings.
Mr. Chairman, is there a vote on this?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, there wasn't, thank you, John. I got the motion and a second and didn't approve it. All those in favor, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as they stand from last month. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting me, John. Site plan, Roger.
There's a site plan at 205 Wares Valley Road. This request is for a small snack shack to be located behind 205 Wares Valley Road, which houses a river tubing business. The property is identified on tax map 97 parcel 11. The property has recently been rezoned to C commercial and a plat has been submitted to combine this parcel with the parcel identified on tax map 97 parcel 12. The site plan indicates the removal of said lot line. The site plan indicates that the small snack shack currently located at 209 Wares Valley Road will be placed on this property in a location that will meet all building setback requirements. No buffering will be required for this use because it is sitting between two existing businesses. The elevation views of the small structure will satisfy our commercial facade requirements. Parking area will be an unpaved section of this parcel that has been indicated on the site plan. This property is at the corner of Wares Valley Road and Cedar Creek Road, which does become congested during tourist season. The traffic flow from this business should be routed through the existing parking lot of the tubing business and on the Wares Valley Road, leaving access on the Cedar Creek Road only as secondary or emergency exit. If approved, building environmental permits must be obtained prior to the building being relocated to the property. And I do not have the confirmation that the plat has been signed off on. It would be greater than five acres, so it's something that would just be signed on in office. So if you want to make a motion to make that a condition of the approval, that would be good.
All right, make what needs to be included, sign off on the plat.
Just to make sure that that plat's been registered.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, combining those two parcels.
Do we have any questions or comments of Sir Roger? Just to refresh your memory, we went through a site plan on this, I think it was last year, wasn't it?
Last year.
Last year, and it sat, the snack shack sat to the right of River Rat on Wares Valley Road as you come out of Townsend across the bridge. And we approved this other, the reconfiguration of the lot sometime earlier this year, and they're wanting to move this, that shack, snack shack, as they're calling it, to the lot which basically fronts on Cedar Creek, but the access would be through their existing parking lot. Any comments?
I'd like to ask a question on, just for information, does this require any sort of SWIP? It's like it's disturbing more than an acre.
No, I'm not even sure if they're going to gravel the parking lot, and the snack shack is very small.
That's a big parking lot. If they disturb it, it would seem like it might.
Well, if they did anything, it would be gravel, so. But I'd be surprised if they gravelled it.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the set of the plat being signed off on.
Okay, and a second. Any further comments or discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is opposed, like sign. Motion to approve the site plan subject to the plat being registered is given approval. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Hearings. Revised preliminary plat of the overlook at Montvale off of Happy Valley Road by Harmony Property Group. Doug?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna try to do this as seamlessly as possible. There's a lot of information here. The preliminary plat was originally approved in 2006, I think it was May, yeah, May 2006 until March, I don't think that's right. Renewed at the month, okay. It was approved in May of 2006 for two years, renewed in March of 2008 until 2009, so the preliminary plat is expired. When the preliminary plat was approved, we had everything in place that we needed, engineering and everything, so all of that was taken care of. They moved forward and did a final plat for phase one, and it was approved and recorded. The Harmony Group then brought back two, phase two, there was a phase two A and a phase two B final plats, both were approved. James, did phase two A actually get recorded?
Yes.
But phase two B has not been recorded. That's the final phase, has not been registered.
Phase two B has not been.
Okay, that's what I thought. I'm gonna read some of this into the record, just so we have it. Since the preliminary plat has expired, the intent now is to renew the preliminary plat for two more years, but there's gonna possibly be some adjustments to the phase one, phase two A, and two B final plats. At least the two A and two B will come back as final plats. I'm not sure if there's gonna be any adjustments to phase one A. I would like you to know, and you can look at, if you look at the drawing, or the plat, item V1 and V2, essentially everything's staying the same. The lot count has simply gone from 80, I believe, to 76, so they've lost some lots. And the road design, it's the same, the roads are all partially constructed, so there's not gonna be any design changes to the roadway or anything like that. Okay, I'm gonna start on page two. Since the preliminary plat has expired, the preliminary needs to be renewed. In addition, the phase two A and two B final plats, and possibly phase one, will need to be revised as well, and brought back to the planning commission in the future. This is a major revision based on the following items. Number one, the state permits may or not still be active and/or required for onsite construction and erosion controls. Number two, some deterioration has occurred over the course of five years that the project has sat without the road surface being topped. One area of concern is a portion of the roadway slipping down the slope, as well as the lack of top coat of asphalt. Since the topping has been absent so long, an evaluation of the binder course will need to be established to determine what needs to be done. I'd like to stop right there before I read the next one and mention that that evaluation is actually gonna have to come from their engineers and be reviewed by staff, and then we'll report back to the planning commission what their findings are and what the solution to topping that road is going to be. Number three, areas labeled as future development on the phase two A and two B plats that were final plats, I'd like to remind you, are now being incorporated into the lot design of the plat and require a full health department evaluation for septic system approval of all lots. I'd like to go in on just a little more detail right there. When we did phase two A and two B, there was a lot of talk about some of the areas that were not, Gary could not get approved for soil, I mean for septic. And the Harmony Group and their engineers came up with a plan to put several systems on one lot, and then they would pump to it from various other lots. Well, that for one reason or the other between what Gary was doing and what their intent overall wasn't really what they wanted to end up doing, so they've come back and reduced the lot count, so hopefully Gary can get those lots approved. But I'd like to go on record right now that, from what I know, from what Gary has told me already, we may not see 76 final lots anyway. That lot count may be lower, but he's gonna try to make work what they brought in. I'm gonna move now to the outstanding items to be completed. And I would like to mention before that, there's a lot of stuff written here, and you may or may not have read it, but that all follows with the original preliminary plat. I put the new road, I'm sorry, not road numbers, new lot numbers and all that stuff in here. It's a cluster development, it was approved as a planned unit development as well, and it meets all the criteria for open space, they've not changed any of those, except, let's just leave it. The numbers are still good, they still work. I'm gonna read the outstanding items to be completed into the record, and then once I get done, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, and James Tomseck's here as well, and he can answer some of them. Number one, the owner's engineering company shall supply planning staff with a written road completion plan to complete the private road paving and make fixes as noted in the staff analysis. Number two is the renewal of state stormwater permits by the owner as required by the state, and I understand that they may not be required, so that may, I'll report that back with the findings of the road report as well. Number three, the owners to supply updated erosion control plan as per section 5.01.2H of the subdivision regulations. It is further the owner's responsibility to comply with section 7.01.9 for all site improvements regarding seeding, matting, ditch treatments, and other measures to reestablish vegetative cover on all disturbed areas. This will become active once a revised preliminary plat is approved and erosion control measures will be in effect. The reason that's in there is, one, they may not need a SWIP permit from the state again, or an ARAP permit if they've already been covered and cleared. Like I said, there's been a lot of deterioration over five years of sitting, and a lot of the original grass that they planted and sprayed on the hills didn't grow and didn't take. I don't want this to, you know, scare the owner in any way. We didn't see a lot of problems up there, and we'll work with them, but I think we just need to go, you know, site to site, look at the areas that have deteriorated and take care of those, because we fully understand that the geology up there is not gonna let the grass grow no matter how many times they spray it. So we don't want them to just blanket, do that again and spend a bunch of money when, you know, it's not gonna take anyway. Number four, the owner and engineer to schedule a new preconstruction meeting with staff prior to any future onsite work with the road completion plan, state permits if applicable, and revised erosion control plan. Number five is the completion of the topping course of asphalt for all internal road sections in addition to installing concrete curbing of the entrance medians and collateral damage as per highway department, as per the highway department. And this is, this will occur prior to final plat. If they just want to enact a preliminary plat for two years, you know, we don't make them top the road until they actually want their final plats. Number six, final drainage and road certification letters upon completion of all road and drainage construction prior to final plat. Environmental health department requirements and field review fees for review of new lot configuration. That's probably something that I've not written to you before, but I had lengthy conversations with Mr. Ferguson about this particular development because of the geology and the soil and how much trouble he's had, but they, like I told you, they've changed the lot count, and so now there's new lot lines, and he can't go do his field review until they mark those lot lines, and he said they, you know, typically, he doesn't do that field review until he's paid his review fees, so. I don't know what they are, but they can contact Gary. Number eight, addendum and possible amendment to the POA documentation to be supplied to staff for review. Number nine, installation of all road signs, painting, and reflectors prior to final plat. And I'd less like to mention, you'll see several of those have "prior to final plat" in quotations. I've included them on this list so that they don't fall off of this list, but in order to make the preliminary plat active, you know, you could approve it, and it'll be up to them to decide if they want to move forward with a preconstruction meeting. The only thing they'll be bound by is meeting with us and maybe taking care of a few areas that are eroded.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions, Doug? This is for essentially a renewal, or actually a new preliminary plat, because the previous preliminary plat has expired. Any questions, discussion? Yes, Commissioner.
Just make a motion to get this back moving, get it going, under staff's requirements.
We have a motion to approve the preliminary plat. Do I have a second? Have a second, call the law. Do you have a question?
Just a clarification, Doug, what you just said, basically, you're given a preliminary plat, they've got two years to do everything that you've just, that you've just went down, correct?
Yes.
Technically, because that's the window of the expiration.
Well, yeah, they can bring it in again, and that's for extension, but it drops from 24 months down to 12.
Correct, but it doesn't force them to do anything to date, theory?
Other than, once the plat is active, the way the regulations are written, you know, once you approve it, it's a permit, and they are bound by our erosion control standards for new development. Not necessarily the states, even if the state has signed off on them five years ago, they're still, they'll be bound by ours, and since it has deteriorated, like I mentioned, and some of the stuff never grew, they're gonna have to go out there and maybe address those things, even if they leave a lock on it and never finish the project. And then, once that two years expired, again, we would have no reason to go back to the property.
So the phases that we have already given final approval now technically are going back into preliminary? Is that fair to say?
Yes, because they're doing, they had an opportunity, they could have taken half of it out, you know, the first half, but that really wouldn't have made a lot of sense because they never finished the top coat of asphalt, which was a condition that, once they reached phase two B final plat, not preliminary, when they brought that final plat in, which they did, and they got it approved, but we didn't sign it because they hadn't topped the road. That was the last thing they were going to do.
I understand, that's just kind of the first time we've seen a final, almost reverting back to a preliminary, if I'm saying that correctly, right?
Yes, times have changed.
Does that, do you understand, James, that?
I would like a clarification.
Yeah, I mean, that's the...
I think, and maybe I misunderstood as well, but I think the phase one and phase two A final plats that actually had specific lots that were approved final, they would still be final?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. So the lots that were final previously would still be final?
But you're going, I'm making sure, you're taking the entire development, as I hear and read you, as going back to a preliminary status? Is that, am I hearing that correctly?
If I could clarify that a little bit, the only plat in play is two B. Two A and one are already registered, so those are lots of record, but there are no lots of record on two B. So two B is null and void as far as the final plat goes. This would take precedence as a redesign of that plat.
I just, when I read that, like I said, it just says inclusively in entire original development, and that's why I'm making sure.
Well, I think what they wanted, they brought it in as an original whole development, so they just want to renew the plat, the preliminary plat with some design changes as a whole development. That will not negate one and two A, but it will negate two B because it is not registered. Is that clear?
Yeah, there were no changes to any of the lots that were approved final in phase one or phase two. None of those changed on the preliminary plat.
I do believe phase two A had some lots labeled future development that are now being adjusted.
Future development, yes. I'm talking none of the numbered lots, actually numbered lots.
Right, okay. For the planning commission, what that means is, and this is from conversations with Gary and with Guy Wantis that works with Vision as well, is that we may see another phase two A or a portion of two A come in with changes. If they do that, then they'll record that, and the plat previous, the new plat would be valid.
Actually, I think you can probably dump it all on two B if there's future development, and it'll be kind of disjointed, but it can be on two B.
Yeah, that would make most sense, I agree.
That answer your question? Yes, you got another question to come up?
No, it is just, are we doing what we need to do to be helping you get this back going?
I think you are, I think this is the first step, yes.
That's what we need to do.
Right.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Thanks.
Basically, what we are doing is providing a preliminary plat for the project so that work can be initiated again and work towards a final plat. With that being said, do I have a, I already have a motion, I have a motion in a second, I'm sorry. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The preliminary plat is approved, subject to staff recommendations.
Thank you very much.
Roddy and Lawson property off of McGee Road by Mark and Andrea Roddy and Hope Lawson.
That's item D1, starts on the bottom of page nine. Preliminary final plat, minor subdivision, the Roddy and Lawson property is a two lot, two lots served by a 25-foot common driveway easement and a remainder greater than five acres, so technically it's three tracts, that's why you're seeing it, the planning I'm just gonna move straight to the outstanding items to be completed on page 11. Just for clarification purposes, if you're actually looking at the plat, we're gonna add a note, add notation that the Lawson property is lot number one, it'll just be on the notes, because the Lawson property actually doesn't show up on the plat, but for the purposes of maintaining common driveway easement, they have lots one, two, and three listed as responsible for maintenance, and only lots two and three show up on the plat. The Lawson property, if you look, is at the bottom of the page, just for your reference, it's the last one on the common driveway. Then, number two is signature plats and a $20 plating fee for lot number two only. That should be lot number three only. The reason we're doing that is lot number two actually existed, they just changed the lot line, so we don't charge for a replat.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner McClellan.
Doug, is this line indicating a separate landowner right there?
Give me a second.
Except property on the...
Yep, that's the, that's the lot, this actually goes here.
Yeah, this is the Lawson property. This is a lot line.
This is Lawson?
Yeah.
It looks like they did make a separate property on there.
It's previous, yes, that's a lot.
But they're both Lawson.
Actually, I just need to make a comment here, where it says remaining land of Roddy and Lawson, that is incorrect. It's the remaining land of Mark and Andrea Roddy, not Lawson, so Mike Ogilvy will have to correct that.
So you're saying the note, remaining land of Roddy and...
And Lawson is greater than five acres? I mean, it is, he's putting the title of the plat on there, but the remaining land doesn't belong to Roddy and Lawson, it belongs to the Roddys. So that note is to be changed.
And the original private drive is that, or came back to that dash line that has been taken out?
I'm afraid I don't understand.
Well, see, there's a square, almost a square parcel in there that is in dotted lines.
The dotted lines, you see what it says lot two, and you see the faded out dotted lines that are a complete square? That was lot two. They're still having a lot two that is labeled, they've just changed the configuration completely to incorporate the location of the driveway, the loop road.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we need to make that correction to the...
Item number three, change the note for the remaining lands.
There's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, subject to staff recommendation and the correction of the remaining land note on the plat. That covered, Doug? All right, then move to your item that was on your desk, that'd be the hearing.
There's one more item.
Page 11.
Bottom of page 11, miscellaneous items.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Number one, the correction of record for the Walker property replat off of Rudd Hollow Road by Dan Walker, there's three lots with county road frontage. The preliminary final for the Walker property was approved at the February 2013 regular meeting, subject to the following. Signature plats including water and electric and a $20 per lot plating fee. Just for the record, this minor plat did not require the utility certifications as per the amended subdivision regulations. Also, since this was a replat of lot lines only and not the creation of a new lot, there was no plating fee collected. The plat has been signed by the secretary of the planning commission and returned to the surveyor. Staff requests a motion to, and a vote, to accept this correction to the previously approved plat record.
Okay, so we're just doing a technical correction?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
And a second. We have a motion to approve the modification to the previous requirements which were unrequired, not necessary. So we're making, actually, just doing a technical correction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay, now, Heron. That's in your separate memo.
I have to apologize to Mr. Heron, I told him he'd be first tonight. He sat back there patiently.
Don't pick on him, it was my call to put it at the end, so.
Final plat, major subdivision, the revised Robert Heron property off of Murphy Road by Bob Heron. There are four lots, two with road frontage along the county road and two to be served exclusively by a common driveway easement. by a common driveway easement. Um, I'm gonna move to the outstanding items to be completed, which are on page four. I would like to let you know that, um, I mean, there's still work in progress, but we feel like Mr. Harren can get it done in short order. He seems to do everything that he says he'll do, and if the weather allows it, he should be done in a few days. So I feel like, and I think staff agrees, and, and so does John, that, that it's timely and appropriate to put him on the agenda tonight. Uh, the outstanding items to be completed. Number one. Copy of a maintenance agreement or Property Owners Association documentation to be supplied to staff. Bob has that with him tonight, so he showed it to me, and we'll get a copy of that. Number two, there are some tree cutting and removal of plants at the entrance that need to be completed, or... Let me say that again. There's some tree cutting and removal of plants at the entrance that needs to be completed prior to releasing the final plat. And that's for site distance reasons. I've discussed it with Bob. It, it shouldn't be a problem to get that taken care of soon. Uh, number three, the paving of the entrance is all that is lacking with respect to the drive and is to be completed prior to staff certifying the final plat. I will let you know, I was down there before noon today, and there was no paving done. And since that time before the meeting, it's done, so he's completed item number three. Number four. All exposed areas of soil, including stockpiled dirt, require seeding and straw or matting. That's part of our subdivision regulations. The previous application has largely been removed by recent storms. There's also a small pile of debris and stumps that needs to be removed from any of the lots to be sold prior to releasing the final plat. And the reason I mention that, Bob owns one of the lots down there, and as long as he gets it off the lots, he's gonna sell it to other people. He can, he can stockpile it on his own lot. Uh, number five, signature plats, including utilities, and a forty dollar per lot plating fee. And I would also like to mention for the record that both the water and electric have already signed off on the plat.
Do we have any questions? Comments? Do I have a motion? Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, subject, uh, final is approved, subject to, uh, outsiding, outstanding items to be completed. Thank you. John?
I only have one item to discuss, and that is, uh, you might have heard Roger complaining about not being on a list invited for a Little River flotilla, which is gonna be on June 12th, uh, of, uh, that's a Wednesday. It'll be about a half-day flotilla down the Little River from, uh, a point, uh, what, what is that? Something John's, I can't... Anybody know? Anyway, basically, it's canoeing down the Little River. It's a pretty easy trip. I think you can get some education hours on that. And if anybody is interested, uh, just contact me, and I'll get you on the list for invitation. And it's, it's, uh, it's a real nice trip down the river for about a half a day. And you'll get, you'll learn a few things, and, uh, so I'm gonna open that up for the Planning Commission if you would like.
Where is that? John's joining out off of what, like, off of Wildwood?
Yes, River Johns, and then it goes down to the, uh, the water plant, the Alcoa Water Plant.
What, what was the date?
Uh, the 12th of June. It's a Wednesday. So if anybody's interested, it'd be a fun way to get some hours of education. Of course, you've gotta paddle the canoe, so it, uh, it'll give you some exercise, too. That's all I have.
Put me on the invite list.
Okay. No, this is, this is a public officials type of thing, so you're gonna have to... Actually, I, I remember in the past, uh, Bill Crisp used to go on those, and he would bring his fishing rod and do a little fishing as he went along the way. Anybody else interested? I'll just take the list now, okay? Pardon? Well, it's two, two people on a canoe. It's gonna be fifteen canoes maximum. Uh, one will have to, you, you will have a person who knows how to guide the canoe in the back, but you, you're supposed to be carrying your own weight and, and getting the canoe going. Uh, it'll flow down the river for, pretty much on its own, but you'll have to provide a little effort.
All right, let John know if you want to be put on the invite list.
Yeah, I've got Ed, David, and Gerald. Anybody else interested? I've, I've been able to do it in the past, but my knees won't allow me to be in a canoe that long, and it kind of limits me, but I'll be the shuttle for that, that's a part of it.
Thank you, gentlemen. We are adjourned.